Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Williamson County School Board meeting for March 25th. I'd like to ask Board members to please record your attendance. I'd also like to ask everyone to please mute your cellphones or turn them off. And we'd ask that our deputies with us this evening, Matt Erickson and Eddie Koutrus, please come forward and do the pledge of allegiance for us and lead us in the pledge, and then we'll remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is items of particular public interest, our public comment. This evening, we have 16 people signed up to speak, and we allow 30 minutes, so we'll just go with two minutes each, please. When you come up and as I call your name, please state your name, your address, and the subject you're wishing to talk about. And we have a timekeeper over here. Ms. Garrett is our timekeeper, and she'll let you know when your time is up. All right, the first person up is Danielle Kuntz. If you'd please come forward.
My name is Daniela Kuntz. I live at 132 Cavalry Drive in Franklin, Tennessee. I am here to commemorate our resolution of Williamson County that we passed in 2016, and also the newly introduced one in Tennessee Legislature, HJR 0375, for the National Healthy Schools Day, which is upcoming April 2nd, 2019, and it's a week-long nationwide event, and with the theme "A Healthy School for Every Child," and it is for environmentally safer learning spaces. I want to thank the Williamson County School District of Middle Tennessee, Superintendent Dr. Looney and his team, and our school board members, for helping in making our schools environmentally safer, for our students, and for being open to inputs from professionals and parents pointing to the necessary environmental improvements. It will be of tremendous help to also educate all employees in yearly trainings which point to the important environmental safeguards, so they too can identify potential hazards to protect students and others in schools too. And I am looking forward in seeing it all implemented soon with the help of Superintendent Dr. Looney and his team, who is currently working on this project. I'm immensely thankful for this. Thank you. I'm just making it short because I see there are so many other people, but I sent you an email, and also you have a copy of the email. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Griffin.
Hello, I'm Tamara Griffin. My husband and I have two girls. One is at Crockett, and the other is at Woodland Middle. The Cultural Diversity Council was started to address problems students of color encounter in WCS. Trips to plantations, a child was told her skin is the color of poop, and most recently, a child was called the N-word on the bus. The teachers and administration need to be given the tools to effectively manage and address these types of incidents. We hope to prepare our students to be leaders and global citizens. I would like to thank Dr. Looney and Erin for how they have helped us address these issues, and we're looking forward to the school board and the entire WCS community embracing some of these overtures. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Masuk.
Dan Masuk, 2625 Cortland Court, Silver Stream Farms. I'm talking about the Mill Creek Elementary rezoning. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Two of my neighbors and I are here to share some thoughts in advance of the rezoning proposal that will be presented next week. Before we do that, I want to express my heartfelt thanks in advance, and just all the careful consideration you guys have given in this rezoning in the last couple of months, especially in the light of the other community concerns we know you're dealing with as well. We know that each one of you are invested in the long-term success of Williamson County; otherwise, you wouldn't be sitting where you're at. That's why I'm here to ask you to look at the new proposals for how they will address both the short term and long term. We all agree that overcrowding is not good for the long term. We all agree that something has to be done to address the squeeze that the faculty and the staff are feeling at Mill Creek. But we also want to make sure that whatever is done in the short term complements the long-term outlook. People are moving to Nolansville daily, and their neighborhoods are continually popping up. It's nearly impossible to stay ahead of the explosive growth that's happening here in Nolansville. But here's what is possible: making decisions now that are likely to complement what's to come in the future. If we're going to relieve a school from overcrowding, let's provide lasting relief rather than having it quickly return to overcapacity. And if we're going to uproot students from one school to another, let's make sure that the decision doesn't just check a box, let's make sure it fits within a strategy. We look forward to learning more about the new proposals, and we urge you to look for short-term relief that fits with the long-term plan for Nolansville. And thank you again for your service to our community, and our schools, and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Taylor.
Good evening, Erica Taylor, 3001 Wannamaker Trail, Mill Creek Elementary rezoning. Good evening, I'm following my neighbor Dan tonight to share some new insights on walkability. The CDC, the Safe Routes to School Program, the Tennessee Departments of Health and Education, and the town of Nolansville have collectively invested millions of dollars in promoting walkability and physical activity through how community environments are structured. The most recent study data showed that only 13% of kids aged 5 to 14 usually walk or bike to school. That's a 35% drop from 40 years ago, when nearly half of children usually walked or biked to school. This highlights why it's so important to keep that opportunity alive for kids who currently have it. We are grateful that walking and biking is possible for 30-plus neighborhoods in Williamson County. It's a unique opportunity that we're asking you to help protect for all of us. In a March phone call with a senior policy advisor from the CDC, a resident of Silver Stream Farm was told that what these walkable neighborhoods have is "exactly what CDC is fighting for across the country." We know that walkable neighborhoods in our county, and what we have is rare, and we don't take it for granted. We value the trail that we have, and we put the framework in place to make walking and biking habit in our neighborhood. A walking-biking train has been formalized, where different parents were responsible for getting children from the trailhead to school and back each day. And if we stay at Mill Creek Elementary, you can expect our numbers to grow and our habits to deepen. We believe in the long-term value of walking and biking to school for everyone, not just us, which is why even after this is over, we'll be asking you to consider walkability in future siting plans and zoning parameters across the county. It's important to note that Nolansville leaders are working to continue connecting the town through an extensive trail system, so this issue of walkability probably won't be going away anytime soon. Thank you for what you do. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Farr.
Amanda Farr, 2508 Hester Court, Mill Creek rezoning. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight and share thoughts ahead of the rezoning proposals that will be presented next week. I'd like to conclude by sharing some thoughts about what will be important to consider as you review the upcoming proposals. First, we'd encourage you to look at all the facts with fresh eyes. In recent weeks, Central Office has updated several pieces of information, and I'd like to thank Dr. Looney, Ms. Nunley, and everyone else in Central Office who has invested a tremendous amount of time and energy into this rezoning. We know it has not been easy, and we really, truly appreciate all that you do. Given these updates, we ask you to carefully consider this new information when reviewing each of the proposals, including the original one. Next, it'll be important to think about precedent. Following an existing precedent and doing something that's already being done elsewhere in the county is one thing. Setting a new precedent that represents uncharted territory is another. We respectfully ask that you stand against any proposals that would potentially leave neighborhoods bordering and able to walk to their zoned schools, vulnerable to being rezoned away from these schools. If we're going to blaze a trail, let's do so by being one of the most forward-thinking and caring districts when it comes to walkability and children's health. On behalf of all of my neighbors, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to Gary for his efforts to listen and advocate for what he thinks is best for District 5, and every member of the board for the time that you've invested in this rezoning. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ravita Ramon.
I would like to discuss the political motivations--
Could you please state your name, address?
Thank you. This is my first time. I'm Ravita Rockman. I live at 300 Shadow Creek in Brentwood, and I have two boys who are actually here today that attend Edmondson and Sunset Middle. And I wanted to express my concerns about the Cultural Competency Council and why it is important and necessary. I had shared an email with many of you here today, but I would like to read it and share it. The training for Williamson County schools that has been provided through the actions of the Cultural Competency Council have not been politically motivated, and it appears that some information is clearly missing, and people have followed an incorrect statement without researching all of the details. I would like to share my personal experiences on why that is incorrect. I have two African-American boys in Williamson County schools, and my journey on what they are exposed to led to me participating on this council. I had never been to a plantation prior to my son's field trip to Carnton Plantation in the Civil War home of the McGavix. This was a horrible experience for me and my family. My son was one of two black boys at his school in the fifth grade, and at this field trip, the truth was clearly not provided. I heard several parents showing empathy towards the 12-year-old boys fighting the Civil War, but no empathy towards the slaves who worked in this home. The kids played cricket on the lawn, and the trip glorified a horrible time in our history here in the United States. A friend of mine took her children, her daughter, to the Sam Davis Plantation field trip, and adosent told those students that the slaves have it better than I do. I'm not sure how being ripped away from your family, raped, beaten, and having no rights is better than a person living today than those who were slaves. To say this process of training started for the Williamson County school staffs has been ongoing for over a year is political. It's clearly an uninformed attack on the issue while denying the empathy that we deserve when teaching social studies, civil war, and slavery in schools today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Derek Hampton.
Hello, my name is Derek Hampton. I live at 3001 Canal Street, Nolansville, Tennessee. I'm here in support of the Diversity Council. I'd like to thank Dr. Looney and Erica for all of the-- Erin, Erica? Yeah, for all of the work that they've done. But just kind of want to set the record straight about why it's important. There was an incident where kids formed a Trump line, and they only let white kids through, and they stopped black kids, Indians, and anyone else, Latinos, and told them to go back to Mexico. Unacceptable. There was an incident where the kids were divided into two groups: one African-American in the school, in the class, and they were told to debate for and against slavery. Now, I don't think that this is something that was done in mean spirit, but it's the fact that nobody knew that it shouldn't be done is why we have the council. Not to indoctrinate anyone, or anyone's children, but we just want our children to be in a safe environment. That's why the council is important: not to indoctrinate children, not to spread political motivation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Coddle.
Hi, I'm Anna Coddle. I live on Scruggs Avenue in the Rolling Meadows community. I'm also a special education advocate and a parent of two boys adopted from China with disabilities. It took our whole church to get our children here. I help parents of students with disabilities who have IEPs and 504 plans. As our boys have grown up, I've come to realize there's so much trauma and loss involved in adoption, from the loss of birth parents, mother tongue, mother country. Dr. Karen Purvis is a child developmental specialist at Texas Christian University, said, "Trauma is so powerful, it can rewire the brain, making learning and regulating emotions and behavior harder. It makes school almost impossible for children from backgrounds of trauma, abuse, and neglect." So I was so encouraged and excited when I saw that Williamson County schools, several of them, had already implemented trauma-sensitive care models and curriculum. Even in Walnut Grove School, one of the ones that Dr. Purvis developed, I was even more so thrilled that Williamson County schools are providing teachers with training and inclusion and bias and privilege, because adoption has been a real entry point for me into understanding my own privilege. Because I was born without a disability, because I was born in an affluent country with access to medical care, I wasn't ripped away from my birth family, and I didn't lose my country and my home. This has opened my eyes to, within Rolling Meadows, the rock wall that I've always thought was beautiful that bounds the meadow, but that for my neighbors who may have only been emancipated for three or four generations can maybe point back to ancestors who built that wall that still bounds that neighborhood today, and how their children may have even internalized that trauma, and how that impacts them at school. So I'm very thankful for the training and inclusion and bias and privilege, because it helps our teachers better understand our children's needs.
Next speaker is Valerie Nunley.
Hi, my name is Valerie Nunley. I live at 2434 Orchard Street. I'm here to speak about the Mill Creek rezoning. I'm here with my family and neighbors to respectfully plead with the board for a long-term, well-planned, well-executed rezoning solution that will have the most impact for our community. In the space of a few months, our sweet town has been torn apart by this rezoning issue. Neighbors have turned upon neighbors, unkind words have been spoken and written in this lovely age of social media. The negative effect on our community if this were to recur year after year is unthinkable. And if the original proposal, one of the nine that I understand will be presented, is accepted, that is exactly what will happen. Numbers are difficult to argue with. The well-intentioned original plan will not last the stated three years. It will not even get us to fall of 2019. With the original proposal, 777 students will remain at Mill Creek, which will only allow an additional 23 students to enroll before capacity is once again reached. Homes continue to be built in Summerlin and Telfair, and soon, the enclave at Dove Lake. This guarantees we will again be overcapacity in less than six months, and we will be back in this space having these same discussions in less than a year for another rezoning. Our children and our community deserve so much more. I have confidence that you, as the board, can give us a plan that creates the stability our children deserve and that our community needs. In addition, I would respectfully ask the board to please consider proximity and adjacency in your decision-making process. My kids bike to school every day. We can see the school from our house. School lets out at 3:45 PM, and my kids are in the door at 3:54 PM, though I have been told that they are extremely fast bikers. Please continue to promote walkability for our children in our schools. Thank you so much for your time, energy, and effort that you put into our children. Greatly appreciated.
Our next speaker is Carrie Maron.
My name is Patty Cantor. I live here in Franklin. In the news lately, it mentioned there have been classes offered to teachers on white privilege.
Ma'am, excuse me, I called Carrie Maron.
Oh, I thought you said Patty. I wear hearing aids, so I don't always fix everything.
I want to thank for the opportunity and for you to listen to our concerns. Based on the alarm--
Excuse me, could you please state your name?
My name is Carrie Maron, and I have children. One of the middle schools here in Brentwood. So based on the alarms and deep concerns over the Williamson County Schools' cultural competency series and the white privilege trainings, as parents and taxpayers who you represent, we are entitled to know the following. We request the identifications of the individuals of the Williamson County School Module 3 cultural competency series videos. We request the identification of those who ran the cultural competency training series for Williamson County. Who was the facilitator? Who was responsible for selecting and bringing Mr. Horatio Sanchez, Module 1, to this series? Who filmed and trained and edited the videos? What company? At one point, Dr. Looney and the school board all agreed to these, so who approved them? Williamson County Schools has had a history of cultural competency services in the past. What and who were the resources used then? What plan for continuance of the first three white privileged modules does the school board, cultural competency committee, and/or Dr. Looney have? What are the plans to use the Peggy McIntosh White Privilege, unpacking the knapsack, or any other related materials that the public did not know about for the Williamson County educators since they have already been distributed? What are the plans and the administrations for creating, viewing, approving, and sharing final videos in these series with the educators and parents, which was reportedly halted and is in revision? Moving on to the Diversity Council, who are the members' names of the Diversity Council, cultural competency committee? How many seats on this committee are there? How do we get on the cultural competency committee? Is there a standard operating procedure for the cultural competency committee? Who approved this committee formation and approved the members on this committee? Who do the cultural competency committees report to? Is this a paid position? How do we obtain all the minutes and the agendas from the cultural competency committee since their formation and oversight of the curriculum specifically to the OER? How do-- number nine.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Rose-- is it Miller?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Rose Miles. I'm from Brentwood, and I'm a mama of two kids in Williamson County schools. And I would like to thank Dr. Looney and all the board members for their thoughtful consideration of reversing the particular SPLC-related training. We understand, or I believe, that diversity awareness, cultural understanding is huge and important. I just think that possibly we can do a better job at being not politically aligned, and I think that we can do better. And I just so commend you for your courageous reversal of some of these decisions, and just like to know what we're going to do to address the good concerns, important concerns, in a better, non-political way. And I'm not popular. I started just--I couldn't find any answers, and I just wanted to talk to people and find out answers, because I didn't know a lot. And against maybe better judgment, I decided to start a Facebook page that just was about asking questions and asking for parents what they knew and what the concerns were. I posted just the link that says, "WCSTN Parents Want Facts." I just said the name of the page, and my very first post in a social media in Brentwood, I was called racist for asking questions and starting a page named only for that. I was very disappointed. I'm not actually white. I'm red, but I identify as white, but I love all children, and I want them to be deeply respected. And no racism of any sort is acceptable to me or my children or my family. I will not stand for it as a person.
Next speaker is James Wesley.
My name is James Wespe. I reside at 1328 Mohar Boulevard, and I come here to support the diversity training. And just to let you guys know, I moved here in June or July from Chicago, Illinois, and my family and I had high hopes of, you know, being in this district and having my son the opportunity to get educated from what I've heard, one of the best school districts in Tennessee. But I was appalled to hear of some of the actions that was taking place with some of the teachers, and to be honest, I know we can't monitor or we cannot control everything, but when we have educators and we give them the opportunity to take care of our children, the last thing they need to be worried about is how they're being taught. And that's a behavior issue that needs to be stopped. For a couple of people who come here, came up, you can actually join this Diversity Council just by showing up. I showed up and just put my name on the email address. So we asking all families who want to involve in this diversity training to just show up. And we all need to come together. And I thank Dr. Looney for establishing this committee, because it's not going to be perfect, and we don't intend to it to be perfect starting off. But at the end, everybody will. This will be beneficial to not only our kids, but also the parents. And if I'm here to be an advocate of this school, I do not want to have to defend somebody who are teaching slaves and stuff like that to my kids. So from that point, I'm just asking for support to continue this council and continue this diversity training. It's not perfect, but that's why we need everybody to be here to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Patty Cantor.
I got it right. My name's Patty Cantor. I'm from Franklin. In the news lately, it mentioned there have been classes offered to teachers on white privilege. I contacted a chief of police, David Boers, and asked him what white privilege was. He told me white privilege is the new battle cry of the progressive Marxists, that America was founded by the founding fathers who were white, who rigged the system in their favor to exploit everyone else. Minorities, women, and the poor suffered ever since, while white men have profited. It's another canard that joins a long list of lies that the Left has advanced over the years. Another one I would-- David Boers can be contacted through Sharia Crime Stoppers. I think he's a really good resource person. You'd be working with the police chief that really knows what's going on in our country. Another webpage that I would like to recommend to the school board is Understanding the Threat, UTT. John Guandolo is the president of it. He was an FBI agent until the FBI became so corrupted that he left and started his own grassroots organization to try to educate people, the common citizen like me, about what is happening. He mentioned in a newsletter, which you can get through email, that the Southern Poverty Law Center advocates and supports an organization called CAIR, C-A-I-R, which is a jihadi organization. It's Hamas in the United States. I think these are things that we need to really become really educated about what's happening. We live in very perilous times. The Bible is the best book to explain the times of which we're living, and to understand why we're seeing things happening with greater intensity and frequency as we come to the end of the church age. I am a born-again Christian.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, our last speaker for this evening is Mike Fort. Okay, our last speaker for this evening is Mike Fort.
Good afternoon or evening. I think we all, at this point, have watched the, oh, sorry, Mike Fort, College Grove, District Two. I think we have all watched the diversity training, cultural competency, who want to watch it, and there's a lot of people in the gallery who have. And I think it seems clear that we've formed our own opinions, and it seems clear to me that there's also an agenda to the videos. So, I have some questions for the board. Do you support the white privilege training and the statements contained in the modules? Is it safe to assume that you agree with that if you don't otherwise state that you do or you don't? If you don't agree with it, what are your plans to address or correct the issues in the white privilege modules? Are you also aware that mother-son, father-daughter events have, all the names have been changed over the last year? And I really didn't know why until I saw this diversity training stories come across in the news, that they've all been changed, it seems like, over the last years to not include mothers and fathers? And is that the direction that we're going to take in this county? So, those are my questions. I hope that you go on the record and tell us what your thoughts are about it, so the voters will know.
Thank you, speakers. That ends our public input session for this evening. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, but before we approve it, board members, we're pulling off the Agenda Item 7H. We will not be dealing with that one this evening. So, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? We have a motion for Mr. Welch? Like to second it?
Second.
Second. Mr. Mitchell? Any discussion? Okay, I see none, and go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, board. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Anyone like to make a motion for that? We have a motion for Ms. Garrett. We have a second for Mr. Fiskus. Any further discussion? I see none. We go ahead and record our votes on that.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, board. When we approve the consent agenda, we approve the February 18th, 2019 school board meeting minutes. We approve board policies on second reading, 5.310 on vacations and holidays, 6.402 physical examinations and immunizations, and we approve the recommendations for field trip fee requests. The next item is communications to the board, superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm going to go a little bit out of order so we can honor the students first before I get into the primary purpose of my report tonight. So, Mrs. Birdsong, if you'll come forward, we want to recognize some of our outstanding students, scholars, athletes, and artists, and then some employees as well.
Yes, we will. Thank you, Dr. Looney and board members. We are going to start with perfect ACT scores. So, Mithal Malakha, come on up. This is Stephanie Simmons, an assistant principal at Brentwood High School, who is, we want to make sure we get all the pictures. Very good. Congratulations. Ms. Simmons, stay with us. Okay? Because we've got part of Pola, oh, I wanted to practice. Okay, tell me to say it. Poliverpoo. Yes? And you have siblings, don't you? I know, because I've said this name a lot, and I probably haven't done it well. So, but anyway, congratulations on your perfect ACT. So, those two are from Brentwood. And now, from Page High School, Andrew Sullivan. Andrew? And Dr. Shane Pantah. Okay, pose for pictures, Dr. Pantah. Smile pretty, please. Nice, congratulations. And from Ravenwood High School, Samuel Duggan. Samuel Duggan, and Dr. Pam Vaden. And these gentlemen earned their perfect ACT composite scores during the February testing period. So, now, we are going to move on to Rishi Pillai. And Rishi was named the Tennessee School Boards Association First Vice President for the Student Congress on Policies and Education, and Rishi is from Nolansville High School. And we have tons of honors from the Tennessee High School Press Association Awards, so just sit back and enjoy listening to all of these. From Brentwood High School, they earned the best TV station, WBHS9. Also, from Brentwood High School, they won the best live sports coverage, and that is from their football production. And they also won first place in best newscast. Team members are Ashley Gracia, RJ Taylor, Madison Hebert, Cole Hubbard, Allison Steele, Robert Dickinson, and Cole Hendry. And for best lip dub, Nathan Nance, Allison Steele, Lena Gurley, Casey Crowe, Sierra Wendell, James Derryberry, Garrett Lenny, and Jack Wilson. And Brentwood also won first place for the best news package, Garrett Lenny and Caroline Hart. And Brentwood won again for the best sports video, Casey Crowe and Nathan Nance. First place best sports package, RJ Taylor and Garrett Lenny. And then, there was a tie here for the first place best short feature story, Cristobal Spielman from Brentwood High School. And I need to say, Brentwood High's teacher, his name is Ronnie Adcock, Ronnie does a fabulous job, but Cristobal tied with Franklin High School. First place best short feature story, Joe Drescher and Ryan Wells. Also, from Franklin High School, first place best commercial, Will McAdams and Ivan Chin. Also, from Franklin High School, first place best music video, Will McAdams, Will Madison, Seth Woodruff, and Kaylee Chapman. And from Franklin High School, first place best video, lots of names here, Bryson Sams, Porter Edwards, Matthew Dyer, Anna Claire Latta, Jason Foltz, Colin Perrigo, Carter Fulkerson, Bitten Pillens, Joseph Ann, Braxton Lazarus, Moses Levine, Matty Kerr, Brandon Coleman, Joseph Clinton, Nikki Tudor, and Emily Mayer. Their teacher is the fabulous Carrie Thompson. But independence was not denied, and they earned first place in the best public service announcement. Mia Prowse and Lissy Hayes. And first place best reporter went to Bella Gordon. First place best sports show, Gavin Hayworth, Reed Smith, Garrett Walker, and Jackson Warren. Their teacher is Mr. Matt Balzer. And now, I think we won just about every award at the Tennessee High School, I'm just going to say. Okay, but now, we need to honor some staff members, and we are going to honor first from Scales Elementary School, Melody Scott. Melody was named the Tennessee Council for Social Studies Elementary School Teacher of the Year. And guess what? We won at the high school level, too. This is Ray Sheets from Franklin High School. He was named Teacher of the Year by the Tennessee Council for Social Studies. Congratulations to all of our students and staff members.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong. Congratulations once again to all of you fantastic students and our employees that do such an amazing job. Board members, I'd like to transition now. We've had a lot of speakers tonight talk about a couple of different topics. Just as a reminder, we will be having a special call work session next Monday to talk about the various zoning plans that the staff and I have been working on for your consideration. I'd also just like to acknowledge, for Mrs. Kuntz's sake, that we will acknowledge the National Healthy Schools Day on April the 2nd, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. I also like to make a brief statement that I'm going to have a couple of staff members that are going to help me work through some information for you, and so I'll read a little bit of my statement and then perhaps speak from the heart. So, I'm, board members, I'm very thankful for the conversations we've had over the spring break holiday, both in person and face-to-face and by phone, talking about and you asking questions about the cultural competency training that our district has engaged in, really for the past two years now. This is important work, and it certainly can evoke strong emotions and responses from everyone, which is why it's important for me tonight to add some clarity, hopefully, to what we have been doing in our school district. And let me start by saying this. Let me assure you, we have no intentions to indoctrinate teachers, employees, and/or students in Williamson County Schools. This is not a liberal or conservative agenda topic for us. This is really about being responsive to concerns that parents and employees have brought to us over the course of my tenure here, but kind of coming to a head this last year or so relating to how our employees, how our employees are treating the students that we serve. I do want to say that Williamson County Schools is the epitome of what most school districts aspire to be. I mean, everybody wants to be like Williamson County Schools. We have awesome teachers and administrators. We have some of the brightest students I've ever encountered, and their parents are supportive, and we see that manifested all the time in our school district. However, if we're going to continue down this trek of excellence, it's also important for us to acknowledge shortcomings that we have and to address them head-on and to engage in honest debate and conversations about how we might improve and continue to make progress as a school district. So, last January, January in 2018, I met with a group of parents that brought some of those concerns forward. You heard some of that mentioned tonight, and I decided to engage a broader perspective of parents from our school district rather than just one small group of parents. And so, I asked Mrs. Birdsong in January of 2018 to help me advertise the creation of a cultural competency committee or council. That council was open to all Williamson County School District employees and any Williamson County parent, anybody that had a student in Williamson County Schools, and that remains true today. Anybody that wants, that has a stake in this conversation is welcome to come to these meetings. They're open to parents, they're open to employees. We meet on a somewhat regular basis. We typically meet once a quarter, and this year, we've met twice so far. If you're interested in joining or if you have concerns about this, as I always do with all of the people that I talk to, I always give out my contact information. So, with your permission, I want to make sure that the audience and those watching tonight have my contact information, and I'd be glad to speak with them about this issue or their potential involvement in the cultural competency council. So, my email address is mike, M-I-K-E, dot looney, the at symbol, WCS.edu. And just as I give our students and parents and employees my telephone number, my telephone number is 615-293-0997. I welcome your call. My voicemail fills up rather quickly, it's full today. Mr. Wimberly reminded me of that, and I haven't managed to catch up, but I will as soon as possible. But anyways, in January 2018, we started working on how do we ensure that all of our students feel welcome, wanted, and worthwhile in Williamson County Schools? And while there were a number of issues that were brought to the forefront, I decided, this is, it was my decision, I decided that the work for the first year of this committee or this council would be to focus on the upcoming social studies standard revision because we were going through that process. And the topic of slavery and the birth of America and related issues manifests itself primarily in social studies curriculum. It seemed like an obvious first-year choice. So, what we did is, as you know, we've been doing open education resources this year, and we've had social studies teachers developing curriculum resources, and I would present those, or actually Erin would help in making sure this was presented, the nine-week standards that we were considering adopting for the school district, and we would ask the council members to review those from their lens, to see if we were inadvertently missing something or showing bias in some way and telling our story of America. They provided some really good feedback. As a result, we've made some substantial changes in the curricula to make sure that we told a very balanced story of the creation and advancement of our nation. I'm proud of that work, I really am. Unfortunately, in that process, some other things happened, some intervening things happened in our district, and you know about several of them, you don't know about every one of them because those are operational issues, and I typically don't bring you issues that deal with operations. But we've had several incidents where teachers, former teachers, I should say, you know, said things, did things that were professionally out of bounds. And I therefore decided that we needed to, in addition to work on the social studies curriculum, we also needed to focus on trying to stem the damage that we were doing inadvertently at times, but sometimes just overtly, to students that we're charged with serving and protecting. And so, I asked Erin to help create a video series talking about how do we make sure that we treat all of our students in Williamson County Schools with dignity and respect? It's just that simple. The videos were created internally using our own staff members. Our own staff members videoed it, we had no outside consultants. They're not perfect videos. They're internal, low-cost items where our employees were sharing their perspectives with each other about these important topics. I'll be the first to admit, the responsibility falls on me. I authorize them. It's an operational issue. You have never, in the 10 years that I've been here, in fact, no board has ever been involved in the development of professional training for the employees of the district. So, that's something that you don't do. What you do do is you approve the plans that we submit to the state, and they are broad, and they are primarily funding-based plans, and so you have approved the plans in accordance with the law. With that being said, our intent was never to disenfranchise any single group. It was rather an intent to bring us all together. And despite the conflict that has ensued, I really think this is good for us because conflict gives us an opportunity to clarify where we are and what values we have, and I think we all share the same value, and that is our students, regardless of where they come from, whether they're rich or poor, what their race is or what their religion is, deserve to be going to school, in a classroom, loved by their teacher, and treated with dignity and respect. I think everybody in here wants that. So, you know, if it was a perfect world, we would have used the word privilege instead of white privilege. If it was a perfect world, I would have required more editing of the videos to be done. But the reality of it is, those were internal family conversations amongst us. They were never meant to be public domain. They're not going to be shown to the students. They've been shown to all of our employees for the sake of starting conversations. The conversations were held in the buildings, and I'd like to share with you the process that we used to talk about the videos, but I also want to clear up some misunderstandings about whether we have violated the law, whether we have followed the appropriate process, and to do that, I want to call on a few people. So, first, I'd like to call on the legal counsel for the school board to answer the question of whether or not the school board or anyone on the administrative team has violated state law as it relates to this process. Mr. Golden?
Dr. Looney, you had actually addressed it a second ago, and we had a couple of questions for board members, Dana Osbrooks and I, over the past few days, most specifically regarding TCA 4963004, which is the school calendar law, which also includes a requirement for approval of what we call professional development, what the law actually calls in-service days. Number one, it requires five days in-service using that language, plus an approval of the plan. By virtue of your vote in May of 2018, we concluded that you are compliant with that law on that plan. As Dr. Looney stated, that it's largely what has been shown to you and provided to you related to budget, and we have not heard anything from the state. And we have not heard anything from the state that counters our conclusions.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. And board members, you may have questions, but I'd like to continue the presentation and then maybe we'll take your questions to however you see fit. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Carl to come forward. Loretta is in charge of our professional development processes in the district and she works with state and federal agencies to make sure that we're in compliance with law and follow their procedures. So, Loretta, if you don't mind, would you talk to the board about the process that we use in Williamson County Schools according to the regulations that we work under?
I'll be happy to. Thank you, Dr. Looney.
And I'm going to advance the clicker.
Okay, so you keep me on target here. Okay, so, thank you for your attention, board members. I wanted to go ahead, you can go ahead on that slide. Thank you. One of the things we do when we're planning PD, of course, is to look at our board's strategic plan. But another thing we do is we do a plan through the State Department of Ed through a system called E-Plan. And E-Plan is what the state uses to monitor a lot of what we do here in this school district and every school district. And a typical cycle of planning with the State Department of Ed follows the bullets on the slide right here where we begin with a planning tool for the district. It's called the LEA Plan and every local education association in the state does that. We do that in January and February and submit that to the state. Our new one is in review with the state right now. We're waiting on approval. After that, in the summer, our schools then do a planning system within that same tool, E-Plan, and they inherit our goals and strategies and work on their own school-level plans. But that planning tool has implications then for the federal funding applications, which are also in E-Plan. So, there's two buckets in E-Plan. I'm talking about the planning and then the funding. When we get to the funding applications for our formula grants, like our title programs and our IDEA grant, we go through a process about this time of year where we begin that. It's due in April or May, late April, early May. We have to make connections in that funding application to that LEA Plan that I just spoke of earlier. And you do approve that funding application every May. As Dr. Looney mentioned, we usually give you just the funding part of that, but we can always answer more questions this year if you need to. The second part of that is then, once after you've approved it, it goes to the state and it is approved and we're giving our final allocations to work with in July digitally through E-Plan. So, in August of 2017, there was a new title. They switched some numbers around and added a new program through the ESA federal program called Title IV for the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. We knew it was coming, but we didn't have the details until August. So, in May of 2017, you did approve our funding application, but it did not include Title IV. In August of 2017, we went to the state ESA conference and learned about the purposes and allowable uses of this new Title IV grant. And our planning team focused in on one of the allowable purposes for safe and healthy students, specifically on the suggested bullet that this is, by the way, on the slide here, there is a capture of the state, the TDOE's training on Title IV. And in their training, we had a bullet at the bottom of the left-hand column you'll see about culturally responsive teaching and pedagogy. We chose that as a planning team because we also had identified that earlier in the spring, even before we got the details of this grant, that that was a need here in Williamson County Schools. On this slide at the very top in the black banner, you'll see eplan.tn.gov. Anybody can go to eplan.tn.gov and see the publicly approved plans as well as publicly approved funding applications for the state of Tennessee.
Loretta, I want to interrupt you. I want to make sure that, we say that again.
Sure.
The State Department of Education publishes every school district in Tennessee's professional development plan, the entire E-Planning, which includes professional development, on the website eplan.tn.gov.
That's correct.
And ours is there as well.
Yes, it is. So, our, the LEA Plan, when you look in the planning part of E-Plan and look at the plan itself, you will see goals and strategies and action steps. And in this slide, I have to put my little reading glasses on here for this part. In this slide, you can see that we had for our LEA Plan, goals, strategies, and action steps that year, we had a strategy, an action step connected to culturally responsive teaching. So, this was again in the spring of 2017, leading up to the 1718 school year. After that, we then went from the planning side to the funding side. We did the funding application for the Title IV FY18 in the fall because, as I said, the state didn't have all the details for it. It was new and it came out in the fall. So, you approved the funding application for that in October of 2017. We got the final approval and allocation from the state in November of 2017. And if you explore in E-Plan, I put a screenshot there of the verbiage we used for what we planned to do with that program. And it did include culturally responsive teaching and it did include bringing us consultant from Corwin PD Solutions to work with our principals first before we would move on to work with our teachers the following year. We did the same process the year after that. So, that was a short year because the grant didn't come until the fall. Right in the next spring, we started working on our plan and then our application for FY19, which is this current school year of 2018-19. Again, you approved the funding part in May of 2018. The state approved the application with the final allocation by July of 2018. And again, in the program details, we again alluded to the work we had already started and planned to continue in the following year on culturally responsive teaching. The same time that this was going on, the other time that you were involved or the state was involved with any kind of approval of PD is when we use dates within the calendar, it's complicated, but from our stockpiled days of our school calendar, we also have to get approval on the topics for those stockpiled PD days that fall within our school calendar. So, we went through that process as well in April of 2018 for this current year by submitting what the topics would be. And we included culturally responsive teaching as one of the three topics for those three days. And then also, we got approved, approval from the Commissioner of Education just 10 days later, last April. The grant process, application, and approval came next and I wanted to share with you also the verbiage we used in the budget narrative. So, we had verbiage in our LEA Plans. We also had verbiage in the budget narrative itself of how we would spend that money. And this referenced the, again, work with Horacio Sanchez, coming to work with our teachers from Corwin, the book we used for the book study with our principals, and the plan to then work with some modules with teachers after that. The timeline we originally set out was even more aggressive than what we followed through. We did slow down after we initially planned this timeline. But again, this was submitted in 2017 and approved that year. So, the implementation of that Title IV funded portion of our culturally responsive teaching pedagogy PD, we purchased books for all principals in November of 2017 for their reading and that was Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain by Zaretta Hammond. We had the Corwin consultant who helped our principals understand the basics of all of that book. Horacio Sanchez presented to our principals two times in February and April of 2018 for four hours each time. So, we split the day into two parts. We made a decision at that point not to deliver PD to teachers immediately, but to hold that off until August. We then brought him back to do a systematic PD with all teachers for just half the day on our district-wide day in August. He had a in-person conversation with one teacher per school in our PD Center, which we livestreamed out to all of our schools where the principals were leading with their staff at their schools. And then we followed that with the online modules Dr. Looney spoke of that he wanted us to do with, we had those with the principals leading our teachers. Module one, in the fall of this school year, when they could fit it into their faculty meeting times or PD. The module two, on our district-wide day of January 3rd, and module three, on our site-based day of February 18th.
Board members, I want to clarify, the work by Mr. Sanchez was completely independent of the internally created modules. Those are two distinctly different things.
Thank you. Two distinctly things towards the same goal of us becoming more culturally competent. So, just wanted to finish my portion here with the overall evaluation of his kickoff in August, which we at the end of made the point to all the teachers that this was just an introduction to start the conversation among the adults of the system and that we would continue that with some online modules to keep the conversation going. This slide just shows you that of the almost 1,500 respondents to evaluate that PD, we had more than 93% positive of rating that as either excellent or good. Thank you.
Thank you. So, board members, that's the process that we've used. I want to add a little nugget before I get into the cultural competency council. As one of the activities that teachers could choose from for additional training, they were given a variety of ideas. One of the ideas was training that was offered by SPLC, the Southern Poverty Law Center. To be frank with you, we didn't know that there was an association or we didn't realize that there was an association between the Southern Poverty Law Center and this particular workshop because we were attracted to the content as a school district. We had 20 employees register for that. I personally didn't know that the Southern Poverty Law Center was in or that even we even had employees registered for that workshop. When it was brought to our attention, we had a conversation about that and we decided not to move forward with that. So, I wanted to clarify that. We have no affiliation with the SPLC that I'm aware of. As far as I know, we've never spent any money on training with SPLC. At least it hasn't been brought to my attention and we don't have any intention on spending any money in the future with SPLC. So, several of you have asked me, what is this cultural competency council? And I've said a little bit about that. So, I wanted to share, the photo to the right is the first in-focus article that we did about it, the Tennessee, and it was nice enough to do a story on that. And we actually recruited families and employees to the meetings. And so, there's a little bit of content, our background about the cultural competency council. Currently, there are 127 people on the email distribution list. Anybody can get on the email distribution list that has a child in Williamson County Schools or as an employee. We're glad to add anybody to that. You can simply join by emailing expression of interest to me or to Erin. The people that make up, that comprise the council have self-identified themselves as Caucasian, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, Native Americans, Hispanic, lesbian, gay, bi, transgender, and I apologize, I never can get that right, individuals with disabilities, multiracial families, diverse religions, Jewish, Muslim, et cetera. And so, this is how we started our work. We asked the members of the council to complete a brief survey, to talk about what, to ask them what they thought the major issues we needed to address were. And these are the three things that came to the forefront, a lack of diversity in WCS staffing and students, lack of knowledge and awareness from their perspective on issues facing minority students, and a need to reach acceptance to students, of students to reduce bullying, especially bullying members of minority groups. I've already articulated what our work has been for the current school year, which is reviewing the social studies curriculum, which by the way, is open for public inspection this week. And then I want to address the, kind of the third issue, which is specifically the online modules. I want to say once again, the responsibility for the development of the modules falls on me. It was my choice, it was my decision, and we have not historically involved the board in operational matters. If you want to change that, and that's certainly something we should talk about, but I asked for staff to create those modules using our own personnel and our own resources. The first module asked these questions of our employees after they watched a short video. The employees then, at the school level, broke down into small groups and had discussions about these five or six questions. I won't read them for you, they're on the overhead and they're available for public consumption electronically as well. After every professional development training that we provide, we get feedback from our employees and ask about, was it valuable use of your time? Over 100 teachers from that first module expressed interest in taking a leadership role in their buildings regarding this topic. 90 to 95% of employees emphasized cultural competency as a top priority that we should focus on. 65 to 70% of respondents indicated that teachers desired more professional development on this topic. 10 to 15% of results indicated only a surface level of understanding about culture. In other words, the kinds of things that you would superficially think about, you know, food, the type of food that different cultures eat, what kind of flags they have and festivals, et cetera, rather than a deeper understanding and appreciation for folks. And at that time, 2% indicated that they needed more building and district-level support regarding cultural competency. The second module dealt with these two specific questions. After they watched the video, they had discussion. Once again, they broke down in groups of five to seven. Some schools had much larger groups, that was their choice, in their building. The results of the employees' responses, 70, 75% of the respondents identified biases related to expectations of students and assumptions, related to their intellectual ability, related to socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, ESL status, gender, or sped status. 50 to 60% of respondents identified biases related to student discipline and behavior. 40 to 45% of respondents identified biases about family engagement. And I won't read each one of those, but you can see that for the most part, our employees felt like these were, that there were issues in our school that we needed to focus on This is the second set of questions relating to module two. And module three, which has created the most public discussion, dealt with the issue of privilege. The employees were asked to discuss amongst each other these topics. And their feedback, there were 390 different groups of five to seven teachers, for the most part, some groups were larger than that. 75 to 80% indicated a need for teachers to educate themselves about the topic and seek further opportunities for reflection. And if, looking at the bottom three numbers, which indicate the teachers that felt like they either didn't need the training or they were uncomfortable dealing with this topic. Once again, I won't read those, but you can see the feedback from the teachers for yourself. This was a, I mentioned this in my video that I produced for employees and for parents, these were tough conversations in buildings and they were uncomfortable conversations. They were imperfect conversations. They were family conversations. They were conversations amongst ourselves about how do we do better for the students that we serve. They weren't perfect. I could have done a better job of making sure the video was edited. The employees shared their hearts. They did as I asked and I'm the one responsible. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Looney about his presentation? Okay, Ms. Garrett?
So, I just, I just want to ask this question again, just to make sure that we all have a clear understanding. So, if a citizen has a question about this information, about any of our efforts related to cultural competency, what is the recommended path to get accurate information?
Certainly, they can contact me directly. I attempt to respond to all emails and telephone calls that I get. If I don't respond at first, please try again. I get hundreds a day. Or contact their school board member and you'll deliver the information to me and I can respond on your behalf or I can share the information with you.
And then, thank you. And then as a follow-up, if one wants to be part of the conversation about cultural competency, what's the way to do that?
Please contact me or any principal in the district and tell them that you want to be added to the email distribution list. We would be honored to have more people served. People are welcome, so long as they're either an employee or they have a child in the district.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have other board members have a question for Dr. Looney? Mr. Welch?
Not so much a question, I just kind of want to make a statement on this. A lot of comments here tonight, and I think most of the community that has raised questions about the vast majority of it are raising questions because they have legitimate concerns. I do think there is a small, very tiny, more vocal segment that is stirring it up because they want to create conflict. But I think the vast majority of those are coming in with honest hearts and because they've seen something wrong. And so speaking to that portion of the community, what I would say is, give each other grace. Give grace on this. These are difficult topics, and these are things that pertain to self-identity and your own children, and how you view the world, your country, and your, and God, and so much. And we, if you don't give grace to one another, if you are going in looking to find the worst in each other, you're going to find it. And if you are going in looking to find the best in each other, you're going to find it. This is not to say cover up any issues. Don't bring them up, don't talk about it, do that. This Cultural Competency Committee, it's open to all Williamson County Schools' parents. It's open to every single county employee. Come, participate, talk. But, but just as much, but just as much, listen. And it's so cliche, and we learned about it in elementary school, but it's true. You've got one mouth and two ears. Listen as much as you talk. And it's unfortunate tonight that we had two speakers came out here demanding answers, and they've left. You've gotten the answers and you left. You came in, you said your angry statement, and you left. And if you want to be angry and scream, there is nothing we can do for you. And there's too much of that in the world. This isn't a perfect program, we're trying to fix it. There's good intentions here. There's good intentions in the teachers as well. I know there's been mistakes made in the school and the classroom. The way I was taught, I look back now and I know that things are wrong, and the way our children will look back, and they will identify things that are wrong. I would just ask, give each other grace. Work with each other, try to see the best in each other, and not the... Enough, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, and I'd like to thank all the folks that came out with your issues tonight and presenting them to us. We were unaware of a lot of this stuff, as Dr. Looney has stated. I hear from the competency group, I don't think there's anybody on this board that are trying or want to see that dismantled at all. It's very important for our teachers to learn, to be sensitive to kids, which I believe the greater portion of our teachers love these kids. I see it every single day. I have eight grandchildren, I drop them off in the school lines. I see principals and teachers out there with umbrellas grabbing these babies by the hand, and I don't see any race discrimination or anything else. They are doing a fine job. But what I'd just like to say is, Mr. Welch, I think it's a much bigger portion of this population and of teachers that have had very hurt feelings. After two years, now if I'm getting this right, two years we've been doing the cultural competency with principals and whatnot, what led it to become white privilege? And that's the question that has to be answered. I don't believe this group of fine citizens here ever wanted to create division. They're coming out in good faith and want to make their issues known. It's very important that we, when we discuss slavery and civil war, that, what did the slaves do? They made plantation owners much richer. I mean, everybody's got to agree with that. The workload was on their backs. And we need to share that properly. And civil war, the black soldiers. I don't know if anybody's seen the movie Glory, but that was a great movie. And if you haven't, get it online. It's about the whole story of the black soldiers that begged for rifles to help fight for their freedom. I mean, there's many, many issues around this. But why, after two years of training, did someone or some people feel it was necessary to separate the white population and say that we are privileged? There are schoolteachers that have worked their tails off to get where they're at. There are people sitting right up here on this board and right here in the staff that worked their tails from the ground up for what they have, and it wasn't handed into them. Just as much so as very professional black folks. They work hard to get where they're at. But when you call it white privilege, what does it do to the average person? Hard work doesn't mean anything. And folks, this is feedback that I've got from teachers and other people, and not just a few. There's hurt feelings out there. We need to come together, and I'm going to, I'm going to come to the competency group because I think it is important. But also, also, I worry, take all the politics, race, and everything out of this, I worry that so many of our teachers that have been dedicated to these kids, that love them every day, and I don't mean just opening a book and say, turn the page two. Sometimes these teachers are the only outlet for a child to vent, and they hear it every single day of their life. And I would just ask that we can get over this hump in this issue and get down to business. And I just ask our teachers to continue the dedication and love for these kids. Because I don't care how much leadership we have. We have great leaders sitting in this room, and I respect every one of yous. But without those principals and teachers out there, you're nothing. This county is nothing without those folks. And we need to address the issue of those that have hurt feelings, that won't come forward and say anything. A lot of this causes divisiveness. Dr. Looney and I have had many conversations, and it's like, it's like walking on pins and needles sometimes. You've got to be careful how we approach issues. And that was my whole thing with this issue. It's not you folks, it's not the cultural competency. I've had training for 45 years in industry. I've had every bit of it. And everybody needs a wake-up call sometime, just to reassure them and keep their mind on track. But please, don't look at those folks that are protesting this white privilege in a negative way either. We've got to come back together as a community, and we need to stay, most importantly of all, we need to stay together as a board and not let this come between us and cause division. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I think a lot of wonderful things potentially can happen. I think this has opened up an opportunity for some really extensive conversation. There's a lot of things that we need to change and improve. And we all need to choose to be engaged and involved. We can't just sit on the sidelines. We all need to make our feelings and our thoughts known. I think one of the things that I want to say as a board member, I was very blindsided by Module Three. First of all, I had no knowledge at all of the modules, the videos being produced. We were not, or I was not privy to them being done and put in the schools. And so when I started getting phone calls from my folks in District Eight, my parents and teachers and citizens, I was totally caught off guard, which gave me an opportunity over this last week, and I've had a lot of calls and concerns, that it could have been avoided if the board had been appropriately informed about the making of these videos, an opportunity to see them, a little bit of input into maybe some of the conversation and things. Because in and of themselves, I think they're very powerful. I think it has opened up a great deal of opportunity for dialogue, for each one of us to look at ourselves and hard issues and, and I'm excited about the potential that we have here in Williamson County to make some changes. Long overdue maybe, but they're coming. And that's exciting because I think everybody's primed and ready to do their part, to make it work and make it better. I am, and I'm excited. But the board can't be supportive, Dr. Looney, if we are not informed. And that, for me, was one of the most difficult things this week, feeling like this kind of came out of, just out of the blue. And I think that this is also an opportunity for us to look as a board at some things that we may need to change in terms of things that we're going to want from you, to make sure that we're informed, that we're engaged. Some of us, I taught for, you know, over 25 years, and some of the language in that third, just the title alone, if I had seen the title alone, I would have told you that that is not a good way to start. White privilege was just, that was not, it was offensive and it set people off. And I think the intent was good, but you've got 12 people that can provide some oversight, probably 12 different viewpoints and feelings about things, but on the whole, we do support you, but you've also got to give us the information so that we're in a position to do the best that we can do. And we've been hampered this week because we did not have, or I will say I have been. I've been very hampered, bombarded, and I am feeling very stretched because I have wonderful people in my district that I love. I have a great many parents whose children I taught in school. I taught in Williamson County Schools for over 25 years locally here, ended up at Hunter's Bend Elementary. So I've got people that I still stay in contact with, including their children. Babies and weddings and all kinds of things because I have that kind of relationship with them. And so to have these people angry and upset with me over something that I had no knowledge about and was not able to defend adequately, put me in a very difficult position. So I look forward to us getting together, talking honestly about ways that we can make sure that we are fully informed about things before they happen. And it also provides some insulation for you if we can say, we've discussed this, we know where we're going, we know what the intent of these videos were, we've seen them, we know, we can give our constituents and our families and our parents and our teachers the support that they need to be more willing to embrace and accept them. So I appreciate the opportunity to let you know that I think, overall, I feel very encouraged. And I hope when you all leave here tonight, that you likewise feel encouraged and empowered to step up and let's make some changes. We're so much better than we've been this last couple of weeks, and I think we can rise up and make some wonderful changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Looney, just wanted to say thank you for coming with the presentation tonight in a lot of detail, owning that presentation, owning what has happened as a CEO, whether you had your hand in everything or not. I mean, that's what you, that's what you do, and I appreciate you doing that. I know it's took a, it took a little bit, we don't always, with a board of 12 and a rather large corporation here, a different kind of public corporation, we don't always move at the speed of social media. But I think, I think the deliberate approach to kind of take a, take a little bit, take spring break and let things, let things cool off, I think was the, was the right one. It created a little bit of a, of a firestorm in the interim, but, but I don't think you, you don't typically react out of emotion, and I think it's good to kind of take a, take a step back. And I really appreciate the presentation tonight. I want, just, I just want you to know, you have my full support in the, in the goals of what we're trying to accomplish here. And so I think that's what, that's what the board needs, needs to be in agreement on going forward is, is the goals and maybe the vision of where we're going. And to the extent that you can share with us kind of a big picture of where you're, where you're going to take it, I think that's the extent of where, of where I want to be involved going forward. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to see, the public ultimately will want to see these materials going forward, and I think that's appropriate, given the nature of our business here. But as far as, as far as pre-approval and that kind of thing, I want you to feel like you have our support and go in and do your job. And so I really just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wimberley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've heard that the best ways to fight racism are through communication and education, and it seems like we have a lot of that going on now. And Dr. Looney, I thank you for your leadership, counsel. I'm impressed, and like Mr. Galbraith, certainly hope that we'll continue moving forward and continue to make more progress. And Erin, good job. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, and I want to thank you and your staff for putting together the presentation. I think it answered, most of the questions are out there. I had a hard time keeping track of all of the questions, but I think that you hit on everything and then some in a great detail to show how much effort is involved in putting this together, that it is not flippant, there's a lot of preparation involved and professionalism too. Maybe, maybe some of the word choices in this are hair triggers for some folks who are easily offended, and advantages might come off better than privilege. It's, if we're going to talk to individuals and teachers making connections with individuals, it's important to recognize that we don't all start equally. When kids go to school, we strive for an equitable experience, but not everybody is at the same starting point in the, in the race that we're, you know, of education. And I'm disappointed that a lot of the critics of this training, very few actually, acknowledged the need for the training. It seemed like the outrage clickbait industry stirred up a lot of dissent and concern. And I have to think that that has totally validated the need for these discussions. If we are, if we're having conversations that may... If we are, if we're having conversations that make us, and look at the ethnic composition of everyone seated up here, if that makes some of us feel uncomfortable, then it's probably effective, and we should probably have more of those conversations. I recently attended a presentation and documentary that where the speaker made the point that we need to spend more time feeling comfortable with having uncomfortable conversations. And I appreciate the efforts in doing so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Looney, thank you for your presentation. As a new Board member, some of this hit me with surprise when I started getting questions about, "When did you approve it?" And I said, "I just started in August." And so, I threw out the newly elected card. So thank you for filling me in. But I will say, listen, to all of us, I work in the church, and these are conversations that we are having to have in our congregations. And so, not only are they happening in our classrooms, among our staff, they're happening among my children, who are high school students. They're happening among students that I work with across the state of Tennessee. They're happening in every part of our society, and they have to happen. They have to happen. Because if we don't talk, there won't be any kind of movement forward. And what Casey said, I can't agree with more. We want to be comfortable all the time, but it's in the conflict. I love what you said before. In the conflict is where we actually grow. If everything was always perfect, if we were always successful, if we never had failure, if we never had challenge, we would not have the ability to be different and to learn and to grow. And in my years of working with young people for many, many years, they are so much further ahead of us on these conversations. They've always been. Every movement across history has started by young people. And so, we need to be willing to listen to them, but we also need to be willing to, in those conversations with them, help them have new information. That's what education, that's our responsibility, right? And so, I just want to say thank you. One, first of all, I've known Erin for a long time, longer than I can remember. I've known her family, her father was a mentor to me, and I'm just so honored to see the professionalism and the development and the way that this team works together from all levels. And so, this strategic plan for training moving forward is vital, and being transparent is vital, communicating is vital. But we have to have these conversations. We can't wait for them to happen in our classrooms, in teacher professional development. They need to be happening at our kitchen tables, in our neighborhood HOA meetings, at the pool, at the restaurants, on the walk into school. They need to be happening every day in our daily lives. We can't expect our teachers to answer all of our problems, to create all of our learning environments. We have to be engaged as parents, as grandparents, as community leaders, as neighbors in this conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I guess I'll voice my support for the training, the need for the training. I think the, it is important, and I agree with Casey, to, these are difficult conversations, and they challenge us, and they put us in an uncomfortable spot. One of the most annoying aspects of my feminist 28-year-old daughter is that she challenges my biases constantly, and it really, it's uncomfortable, but I appreciate her for the fact that she brings that to the table for me, right? And I wonder somewhere, did I do that to my parents as well? So if we're not, if we don't have these conversations, we never move the bar, and we never move the needle. And so, whether we're doing it, whether the method that we used was correct or not, I think that's where we go back and we look at how we approached it. But I do, I am in support of the competency council. I work and on and lead a very worldwide diverse team, and cultural sensitivity is a requirement of our workplace anymore, of a global workplace, global economy that we're in. You look at the diversity of the children that were given awards tonight, and you can see that cultural sensitivity is a requirement of the job of being a teacher in Williamson County as well. And so, I'm supportive of the effort of what you're doing, and let's go back and tweak our process and see if we can't improve on that. To Dan's point, I think that if there were ripples or side effects to the training that have left staff and members in a position to where they're no longer, I don't know that they feel injured of some way, then maybe we need to identify how we mend that and how we address that. Because I don't think that we need to have training that leaves the pupils, even if they're adults, in a way that, to where they're unhappy with what they've been taught. And so, I challenge you to go maybe figure out how we can address, if there are injuries there, emotional or otherwise, that we can identify and repair them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett?
Thanks. Just real quick, we've heard some brave things said here tonight, both with our speakers and around this group. And so, I want to say something brave, that I consider brave. And, you know, we've reflected on, you know, what the school district could do differently and what our staff could do differently and how things could be different. But I also want to say that if you serve in an official capacity for our community, or if you have a leadership position in our community, and you've spread misinformation about this effort, then I appeal to you to stop. Because what you do when you do that is that you do a disservice to our staff, and you do the most disservice to our 3,000 teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, I just wanted to also say that I do support the training moving over, and thank you very much for all your efforts. And, you know, we just have to be careful, and I know I've touched base with Dr. Looney, that labels, you know, using labels is kind of dangerous, because labels can mean anything to anybody. And, you know, the white privilege, it can mean something to somebody in the 50s and 60s, and it can mean something different today. And so, you know, just using labels is just a dangerous thing. It means something to everybody. And what's important right now is to know that we learn by our mistakes, we move forward, and we're now, you know, going through and just deciding, you know, what is our best foot forward. And to know that Williamson County and the staff and the Board, anything we do is for the best interest of our teachers and students. Our intentions are always good. And so, when we hear and we get, you know, comments about negatively what we're doing with the children, they don't know us. They don't know what our purpose is. And there's a reason why Williamson County schools are what they are today. We move forward. Sometimes we go two steps forward, one step back, but we still move forward, and we're still striving to make this the best county we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dern?
I also want to just say thank you, and I'm definitely not as eloquent of a speaker as my fellow Board colleagues, but I really appreciate everything that everybody said. I really appreciate everybody here, Tamara, Ravita, Derek, Anna, Carrie, Stephanie, James, Patty, and Mike, because I feel like, no matter what you say, all it's doing is raising awareness and holding us accountable and causing us to step back and take a look at what we're doing, because we're definitely not perfect. We've definitely made bad decisions, or I have. And I just want to support the 40,000 some odd kids, and, you know, all the staff and teachers and Dr. Looney and everybody who's working hard to make it the best county. So I just appreciate everybody, even if it's stuff that we don't like to hear, I appreciate you saying it. And I think everybody's wise and has valuable opinions, so keep doing that, keep bringing them to us, because we just get better at what we're doing, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Thank you for your critique and your feedback tonight. I, too, am equally committed to continuing the conversation. As I said in my video statement, this is really important work. It's uncomfortable work. I can assure you that all of us would regret talking about something else, but this is important for the boys and girls that we serve, and quite frankly, for our employees. I do acknowledge that there's always room for improvement, and we certainly will take the advice and counsel that you've given us tonight and try to do better moving forward. Once again, I take full responsibility for the work that's been done thus far, and would encourage you to send complaints to me. I'd be glad to meet with people and respond. With that being said, I appreciate this opportunity to address this important issue tonight, and would like to move past the superintendent's report and get on with our business. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Board Chairman's Report, and I wanted to just make sure our Board members knew that you have 10 of these at your place. This is the Profile of Excellence about Williamson County schools. The staff does this, Ms. Birdsong's office puts this together every year, and so this is the latest version, just off the presses, so if you would share that. The other items are on April 1st at 5:30 to 6:30 is a special called work session in the Professional Development Room, which is prior to our policy meeting. On April 2nd at 6:00 PM, we have a community meeting on rezoning at Nolansville High School. And on April 11th at 5:30 is a special called Board meeting to vote on rezoning prior to our regular scheduled work session. And that's all I have. And Board members, is there a desire to have a brief break?
I was just going to let everybody leave and say...
Okay. You want to continue then going? All right. Very good. Next item on our agenda is the New Business 2019-2020 School Board Budget. First one is General Purpose School Fund for $386,428,331. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, I appreciate your deliberation on this matter at the work session. I do recommend that you approve this proposed budget. It's a fiscally conservative budget, but allows us to get the work done.
Okay, Board members, we need to be voting on these four different items under the budget, so we'll take each one individually. So the first one is the one I just mentioned, the General Purpose School Fund. Would anyone like to make a motion for that? We have a motion from Mr. Welch. I'd like to second that. We have a second from Mr. Galbraith. Any further discussion on this first budget item? Mr. Wimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The budget number is a rather large number. It's a record number for us. But I think it's important to remind everyone that most of the increase here is directly related to growth. There is very little that's not related to growth. And there have been a significant number of cuts that have been made to this budget before it came to us. For example, an assistant for health services is not in this budget. We've cut school nurse, we've cut ALC teacher, a behavioral specialist, a gifted specialist, social worker, two speech-language pathologists, one physical therapist, two early childhood classrooms, two sped teachers, 3.6 teacher assistants, an occupational therapist, a speech-language pathologist, 15 special ed assistants, a half of a payroll position, a half of a district webmaster, four maintenance people, one video content producer. And we have cut out of the maintenance budget $700,000, $5,000 out of safety. And these are cuts that were made before we even get into the, what I think is the imminent teacher shortage that we're probably headed for, and the fact that we haven't done anything over the years to change the management model of a school system that has gone, in the past few years, from 25 schools to almost 50 schools. And at some point, this must be addressed, but we haven't addressed it in this budget. Now, I'll vote in favor of the budget. And no one wants to increase the burden on taxpayers, but there is a lot that our staff wanted to put in this budget that's not in this budget. And I just want to remind everybody of that before they vote on it tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Wimberly. I think this is, there's been a lot of cuts already. I also am excited about our opportunity to try to address the pay for our teachers in this budget, and I hope that we're able to, that our county commission reverend will support us on that effort. That said, I also want to make a statement that I do have a relative that works for the school system, and I certify that I will vote, my votes are in the best interest of the district.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank Leslie for doing a great job on this budget and answering. I didn't even have that many questions this year, so I went easy on you. But no, we're talking about roughly a $35 million, I guess, from the revised budget, maybe $32 million increase over the prior year. And Rick started to go into what that's made up of, and it is largely growth for our adding new teachers and new staff members to accommodate a growing district. But over half of it is the raises that we have to provide to, well, I guess we don't have to provide raises, but there's an expectation, the mayor has instructed us to include a 3% raise for all employees, and that's about $6 million. There's another $4.5 million increase, and this is considered an increase over the prior year, because for the last two years, we haven't purchased textbooks. We've been doing our online resources model, and so that is an extra $4.5 million this year that we're having to spend. But it's because we've saved the taxpayers about $9 million over the last two years by not purchasing textbooks. And there's more reasons that we did it than just for saving money. I think it's an excellent program, and if anybody wants to watch the presentation from our work session a week ago Thursday, it was excellent. And seeing what we have in store, and like Dr. Looney said, those resources will be available in the coming week, for probably a couple of weeks, to be able to review those. But over half of our budget, and I'm sorry, there's another about $3.5 million of our increase, because we are, the way we do our budget, the last couple of years, we haven't paid for the salary increase until the following budget year. And this year, we're essentially paying to, we're paying the salary increase for last year and this year out of this budget. And I won't get into the details of how that's, how we're doing that, but it is creating a kind of a cash crunch in the year. And so, you're going to see a lot over the coming months as the county compiles its budget, which is, this makes up a large majority of the county budget. And I just hope that everybody stays engaged during that process to make sure that we do get this budget passed. I did want to, I went back and looked, and these are all numbers that are on our website, where there's an excellent resource that you can go back and analyze the budgets and the expenditures and revenues of the past. And I think it's just important to know that over the last 10 years or so, we've had compounded annual growth of a little over 3%. And during that time, we've had just slightly over 3% and an increase of our employees over the last, that was more recent, that was just about five years. But, and our expenses have grown at about 6.6%. And so, if you take the growth in students plus the average raise, which has been a little over 3% for the last five years... 3% for the last five years, we're growing our expenses at less than the rate of growth, and our employees are about 80, 85% of our budget. And so while this is, this is a, we're catching up this year, and it is kind of a bigger increase year over year, but just over the last five or six years, we're still maintaining a very fiscally sound budget. And I feel completely comfortable going to the county commission and saying that this is not a want versus need budget. This is the budget that we need to do the right thing for our, for all the students and the families that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. So I won't get into it like my colleague, the accountant over here. I did take several accountancy classes in college. It was just, but it was the same class. I just had to take it a couple times before I could pass it that way. But I did well in my marketing class, so from a marketing perspective, you throw that number up there, and you know, you could feel it around here in the audience. Everybody goes, whoa, $386 million, and it's a big number. I mean, there's no getting around it. It's a big number. But if I sort of said, well, compare it to the U.S. National Defense Budget. It's a fraction of it. Or the New York City Public School System. It's tiny in that. You'd laugh me out of the room because context matters. And context matters with that number as well, that $386 million. So let's talk about it. Tennessee is 45th nationally in the country. Forty-fifth. We're near the very bottom in what we spend per student in educating them in this state. Williamson County, everyone assumes we're the gold standard in performance, and you go outside and they think, well, our streets are paved with gold, what have you. We are in the bottom half of Tennessee in what we spend per student. We are in the bottom half of the state ranked 45th in the nation. So when you see that number, realize the context for it as well. It is an extremely lean budget. And what are we spending it on? And Leslie, check my numbers here, but 85% staff. We are spending that money directly into the classroom to pay our teachers and our librarians and all those other wonderful men and women out there who care and educate for our kids. It is a very efficient budget. So are we overpaying them? That's the next question. No, not even close. We are underpaying them. It is embarrassing how much we pay them. We pay our teachers less than almost anyone else in middle Tennessee, and if you go outside the state, much less than that as well. Jay said, that's why we've got to have this increase, because we've got to pay our staff, because we're losing them. We can't compete with the other districts who are poaching our teachers, who will pay them more and will cost them less to live there. The other thing that's going to come up here is people are going to talk about vouchers as a way to offset the costs. And I'm not going to go in deep into the numbers like Jay did, but I want to give you a couple of things. We get $3,410 per student. Is that correct, Leslie, from the state, on average per student? A voucher will pay $7,300 per student, twice as much. The state proposal, what it's saying is that if you want to send your child to a school that can discriminate based upon their academic achievement, if they have special needs, if they're, they don't worship the right faith, what have you. And that's their right as a private school, and that's fine and great and no issues with it. That's the point of a private school. But the state wants to say, if you want to send your kid to one of those schools instead of a public school, which accepts and educates everyone like we do here in Williamson County, we will give you twice as much money. And in that proposal, any money left over, you can keep and you can use for college later on. And if you don't like the experience you get there at that private school, you can come back to the public school. The money won't be there. We'll just have to fund it internally. So when you hear that argument, know it's a crock. It's not a money saver either. So to sum up, extremely lean budget, one of the leanest in the entire country for one of the best performing schools in the entire country. I wish every stock I owned had that kind of ROI, that Williamson County Schools performs. Spending it on the right things. This needs to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly?
Mr. Chairman, I wish I had something eloquent to say, but I, Rick Wimberly, state that I have a relative employed by the school system and certify that I will vote in the best interest of the school district. I rest my case.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fiskus?
Yes, this is a lean budget, and thank you, Rick, for sharing those things that have been taken out of the first draft of the budget, because those are things that are in most need, too, as we think about helping create the right teacher-student ratios through having special ed assistants, through having people who are specialized in social, emotional needs and trauma-informed care, all those things that we talked about tonight. Those things are always those first things to get cut. And so this is a very lean budget. And going on with what Eric had to say about the voucher part, and I'm not going to talk long because my board knows that I can talk long, but when that money does go, and that $3,400 goes towards that voucher, the other part of that $7,300 comes from our budget. We cover that. We cover that from money that's in our budget from tax dollars that we receive. And so that's how this is set. So this idea that ESA money, yes, it says it's going to be refunded to us or to the school district that it's being removed from, but that's only for a three-year cycle. And so we have to make sure that we understand the real dollars that are involved in that program. Read the legislation. And then also, as we think about our situation here, we have, as Eric said, if you look at our scores across the state, we're at the top. But we, it was surprising to me as a person preparing to run for office, and I knew some of that funding, but as I really started to get into it, it was shocking to know that we were somewhere in that bottom 45, and sometimes we've been as low as 47 in funding. And then we, it's a testament to our families, it's a testament to our teachers, it's a testament to our school leaders and so on, that with as little funding that we put in per student comparatively, somewhere ranked out of 144 systems, we're about 75, that we receive, that we see what we're seeing in the recommendations, in the recognitions we had tonight. And since I've been on the board, I can't tell you the number of perfect ACT scores we've seen. And so the most important thing that a community can do is to provide a free, adequate, and fair, and equitable public education, access to it for all. And we have the ability, while this number seems large, know that we have the ability and probably the need to even do more. But this is what we're asking for now, and so I've asked that our commission, our board, that we approve this, and we continue to strive for excellence.
Thank you. Thank you. One of the things that this board has always prided itself on is, as Mr. Welch says, ROI, return on investment, and I always call it return on instruction as well. The amount of investment we have is an ROI squared. Dr. Looney, one aspect we didn't talk about in our budget is something that we end up basically giving back to parents through their own children's advancement. How much dollars of scholarships have our students earned over the past few years?
In the nine years, nine and a half years that I've been here, over a billion.
With a B? Is that with a B?
With a B.
With a B, a billion dollars that goes back to help pay for their future education. So that's all I wanted to say about it. Everyone's had their opportunity. Dr. Looney has recommended this. Are we ready to vote, board members, for the general purpose budget? All right, if you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you very much. The next item, it's a little bit less, central cafeteria fund for $13,883,216. Dr. Looney?
Board members, I recommend your approval.
Would anyone like to make a motion for the cafeteria fund? Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Cleveland, and we have a second from Mr. Cash. Any further discussions, comments, questions? All right, I see none. You have Dr. Looney's recommendation. If you go ahead then and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next item is extended school program fund for $7,66,258. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, this is a self-sustaining fund. I do recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion? Ms. Emerson made a motion, and we'd like to second that. Ms. Durham seconds that motion. Any further discussion? And Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make sure for everybody in the audience that this is commonly known as the SACS program.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if you go ahead then and record your votes for the SACS program.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
All right, thank you. The next item is the capital request for $13,254,951. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I want to make sure that this, for public consumption, that we understand this is the operational capital, not the five-year capital. So I do recommend approval of this budget amount.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? We have, they're fighting down there for motions, so we'll give, Mr. Haw will have the motion, and then Ms. Garrett will have the second. Thank you. Any further comments or questions on this one? Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one of the things I wanted to point out is how far we've come over the years. One of the items in the capital program is playground improvement for $90,000. When we built Heritage Elementary School years ago, we got $5,000 for the playground for that elementary school, and that paid for a little bit more than the chain link fence that surrounded it. In the community, ultimately, through general electric funds and through EDS funds and General Motors funds, we raised, you know, $20,000 to $30,000 to put in swings and things. We don't do that anymore. And that's really kind of, again, when we talk about where have we gone with the growth and what are we spending on, our money on, we're buying playgrounds that are professionally installed and not having to, where the community is having to rent augers and tractors to do the work instead. So I approve of what we're doing. I'm just wanting to point out how it's, how we've come. It's, I believe it was Ms. Cleveland that said we progress. We might, we continue to try to improve where we're at.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussions? All right, I see none then. You have the superintendent's recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. That's the school board budget for this coming year. So thank you very much, board, and thank you, staff, for putting this together. Ms. Holman, as always, an excellent job. I made her smile. All right, next item is open zone schools for 2019-2020. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, we had extensive discussion about this topic. If you approve this list, this will go live at 12:01 a.m. in the morning.
Anyone like to make a motion for this? We have a motion from Mr. Welch. We have a second from Ms. Emerson. Any further discussion on open zone? Mr. Haw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a fairly narrow amendment that I'd like to propose. There are some students in the Oakwood area who have been going to school with other students from Oakview from kindergarten through fourth grade, and they're on the very edge of the rezoning that has sent them to Winstead, but they would like to stay at Oakview Elementary School as grandfathered fifth graders, and they were able to do so. Next year, they're still on the edge of that same line that would keep them from going to Thompson Station Middle School, unlike their Oakview Elementary School classmates with who they've been attending school that whole time. When the new Henpeck Middle School is built, they and those Oakview alums that they are ideally attending Thompson Station Middle School with next year will be zoned to Henpeck in 2020 through 21. So they would not be grandfathered to Thompson Station Middle School ideally because they would only be sixth graders next year. In summary, those few students who are looking to stay with those same kids next year, instead of being the only group of kids who go to Heritage just for sixth grade and then go to the Henpeck area Middle School. So the request is affecting approximately 14 students who would be, have the option to open zone to Thompson Station Middle School, who currently attend Oakview but are rezoned to Winstead.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to second that motion. Ms. Emerson, is that a second? Okay, we have a second. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Mr. Cash, would you hear speaking to this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I know KC's got a lot of the same constituents in the area. I understand, though, that if we move 14 kids, there's siblings that follow. In the way the policy is written, they can grandfather in. So they could essentially go to Thompson Station School, which is at capacity, the elementary. They could essentially go there and grandfather in and stay there if they liked. What I was hoping or thinking we could do is some way make some amendment that says those 14 students can attend Thompson Station for one year and then put back into the middle school where they belong. And the other kids just stay where they're at. I don't know if that makes sense, but I do understand the zoning process. I do understand that Thompson Station Elementary is, it's darn near capacity, if not at capacity. So, you know, if you're injecting 14 kids in, they may have two siblings each. That's another 28 kids. So I do understand that, too. So, I mean, what do we need to do?
Are you making a motion to amend his motion, or are you just discussing it?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's a question because I don't really know what to do. I just, there's 14 kids involved that are going to be separated from this group of kids to go to Heritage and come right back next year. It just, I don't know if it makes much sense, but...
Okay, let me then ask our attorney, Mr. Goen, to respond to that.
Well, procedurally, you have a couple of choices. One, you could make a motion to amend, a motion to amend, in which case, your motion to amend would be voted on first, and then the motion to amend, as amended, if it passed or not, would then be voted on, and then you would vote on the underlying motion. Generally speaking, we don't recommend it just because of the logistics of what I just articulated. But it could be done under Robert's rules. The alternative is through the discussion vote on Mr. Haw's amendment, and then if it passes, you could vote then to amend, in which case you'd have one amendment on the floor. Generally speaking, that's our recommendation.
So in other words, a baba, a baba, a baba, amend.
Too many words?
So...
All right, the other option is if Mr. Haw's in agreement with what Mr. Cash said, he could withdraw his motion, but if he's not, he obviously wouldn't. Hold on, let me turn your mic on. Go ahead. Go ahead.
That sounds like a fine amendment to my motion.
Okay, then, Mr. Gold, he would need to withdraw his motion?
So if that's the case, yes. If you could choose then to withdraw your motion and then let either one of you make the motion that he suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion. Yep.
Can you speak to this to see if this is even necessary? Because one thing that Dan said I'm not sure is accurate, and that is if these people are zoned Oakview, we allow them to zone to go to Thompson Station Middle School, that doesn't mean that their siblings can go to Thompson Station Elementary School. That means that we, that means that they can either go to, they've got to go to Oakview. They can still go to Heritage, which they're zoned to do, or they can go to Thompson Station Middle School. And right now, I want, I don't know where they're going to the high school, but they could continue the feeder pattern as defined by wherever they go from Thompson Station or from Heritage. So I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily, I think we're trying to solve a problem that may not exist.
Mr. Cash, hold on. Go again, I'm sorry. When he spoke, it cut yours off. Go ahead.
It's the elementary kids that can go with these uprising sixth graders that causes an overcrowding at Thompson Station.
If I may, Mr. Chair, under the board policy, they could follow the older sibling to the middle school. The current, the elementary right now is projected at eight hundred and sixteen students over capacity, and the middle school is projected at just under seven hundred. It could, in the following years, add additional students, younger siblings. Actually, older siblings under our policy could go as well if it happened to be specifically to those sixth graders.
So, I mean, do we have to change policies, I guess is what I'm asking? We don't want to, you know, allow everyone to, you know, grandfather in.
So, Mr. Cash, if you're wanting, what I believe you're asking to do is to set aside the grandfathering policy and make an exception to it. So if that's the motion, then the board would have to suspend that policy in order to approve your motion.
Okay, now, we're sure it's fourteen kids from, I'm almost positive. I've talked to Allison about it.
Yes, sir. Those are the numbers we found currently at the school that fits Mr. Haw's question.
So what I would have to make a motion on is that we allow fourteen kids to go, uprising sixth graders to go to Thompson Station Middle School for one year, eliminating the grandfather clause for siblings, correct?
Yes, sir.
Before we go there, Mr. Haw needs to speak because we didn't totally withdraw his because the second wasn't withdrawn yet. So, Mr. Haw?
Okay, good opportunity. Just, and this presumes a construction schedule that stays on time. But what would happen, this would be a neighborhood that would basically be adjacent to the new middle school, and they would be provided transportation to that new middle school. You know, I know there are no guarantees, but the probability that they would want to continue to Thompson Station Middle School and be with classmates that they've been with for only one year, predominant number of whom would then go back to the new Henpeck Middle School, I think unlikely, but I understand that we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at the impact of this and potential unintended consequences.
Okay, are you then withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Then we need to go back and ask Ms. Emerson, would you withdraw? Okay, so now we're back to what Mr. Cash is talking about. And Mr. Wimbley, did you want to speak to either one of these yet, or did you want to wait?
May I wait?
Yes, sir. All right, so, Mr. Cash, then, you're making a motion, and my understanding is we're going to have to suspend policy to do this. So, but we don't have a motion and a second yet. So if you go ahead and make your motion so everybody understands it, and then we'll see if someone is willing to second it.
Okay, I just moved that we allow fourteen students to move to, be allowed to rezone or out of zone to Thompson Station Middle School for one year, depending on, again, construction dates, and that we eliminate the sibling clause in this case.
And, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question just to make sure we're clear on it? And you're specifically describing the current fifth graders who live in the Oakwood neighborhood.
Rising sixth graders, correct.
Does anyone want to second that motion? Okay, Ms. Emerson seconds the motion. Okay, now, Mr. Wimbley, do you want to speak now?
I think this is the appropriate time to ask if staff would weigh in on the motion.
Yes, sir. As we discussed in the work session, staff is not supportive of this motion.
Okay, Mr. Welch.
Rick asked the first my question, so what is staff's recommendation on it? And that's a no. And then compounding this no recommendation, we now want to suspend policy. We're going down a dangerous road here. I would say, I would be much more apt if we were following our policy and had staff approval, even without knowing the long-term implications. I would be willing to trust Allison and Dr. Looney on this, but without knowing the long-term implications, suspending policy on it, staff going, I'm sorry, I just can't support this.
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland?
I brought my request to speak answered.
Mr. Galbraith?
So I guess I'm kind of with Eric on the fact that I don't think we, but I don't think we have to suspend policy. Like KC, I think we're only suspending policy to solve a problem that I don't think exists. So the difference between Dan's proposal and KC's is just a failsafe to make sure that we're not, the trailing kids aren't left at Thompson Station Middle School after they get rezoned back to Henpeck. And I don't think that's, I mean, just logically, that's not going to, not going to happen. And so if it's, if it's, I'll vote for it, I'm fine. I just, if it doesn't pass, then I would ask KC to put your motion back on the table because I think it's cleaner and it doesn't suspend policy, and I don't think it has any negative ramifications. And I think ultimately, as we went through this in our last rezoning two years ago, this, there's the capacity there, and it positively impacts students over the next couple of years and helps them avoid to be, to be and taken, split away from their peers twice in two years. And I think it makes a lot of sense, and so I'm definitely for it. Either way, it has to go.
Thank you. Mr. Wimbley?
I guess this is a question, I'm not sure who can answer this, but I don't think that we've suspended policy since I've been on the board in, however, nine years maybe.
I thought we have, may not be about this issue. One time, Dr. Looney thinks?
If I may, I do want to point out, to your point, Mr. Wimbley, we do have in policy that if a policy is suspended, that it is to be discussed at the next policy committee meeting.
Okay, Mr. Cash?
Mr. Chair, if, I just want, I was asking a question. Okay? If it's much cleaner what KC said, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that, if it's much cleaner. I'm not trying to get people going here, I'm just asking questions. I don't really like, you know, changing policy or, you know, because it's not good practice.
Is this your suggestion to withdraw your motion, or? All right, we have a second withdrawn. Do you want to withdraw yours, Mr. Cash?
I just want it done the cleanest way. Okay, I will withdraw my request.
All right, I don't see any buttons pushed just yet. Ah, now I do. Mr. Haw?
Can we just roll back the tape? So I would like to propose that we allow open zoning for those students who otherwise would be zoned to Heritage and are currently zoned to, currently taking advantage of their open zoning opportunity and attending Oakview Elementary School, to allow that for whatever policy says.
Okay, do we have anyone who wants to second that one? Okay, you're still up there on second. All right, Mr. Gold, does this motion require us to suspend policy?
No, sir.
Okay, so it will not require that. Ms. Cleveland?
This is just very simple. They will provide their own transportation.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Welch?
Dr. Looney, can you speak to why staff is not supporting this proposal?
Yes, sir. As we discussed in the work session, the elementary school is currently taking classrooms in the middle school, so the capacity at the middle school as represented in numbers is actually understated. They do have the ability to remain in the continued feeder pattern, which would create additional overcrowding at the high school should they stay. There's uncertainty about when the area middle school will open exactly. And quite frankly, when those families opted to stay in Oakview rather than be rezoned with their peers, they knew that zoning was limited for a period of time. And so now, from our perspective, they're requesting additional consideration beyond the consideration they've already taken advantage of.
Is there any other group of students that would have had, let's say, similar advantage as these students would have if granted that second round of open rezoning?
To my knowledge, this would be a first time in my tenure.
Go ahead, Mr. Cash.
Wasn't Lipscomb and Brentwood involved in something there?
I think it was, I think it was a different type of scenario. I can't, I don't recall the specifics of it, but I think it was different. Mrs. Cleveland, I think you wanted to speak.
Okay, yeah, that was a little bit different because at the time, Scales, there's a neighborhood that was supposed to be rezoned to Scales from Lipscomb, and Scales was being redone, and then it was just, it was already overcrowded, and the project was taking longer. And so it was better to just, rather than moving this neighborhood, wait until the opportunity for Scales to open up for the reconstruction because it was already overcrowded, and we would just be putting more kids into a construction site, basically.
Ms. Garrett?
Well, thank you. Were you speaking there? Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Welch?
I'm sorry. Thank you, sorry. You cut me off a little early, no worries.
Oh, sorry.
So we've never set any precedent of allowing this. The staff doesn't recommend it. And it sounds like, Dr. Looney, you're not sure, you can't definitively say what all the implications are if we do allow this down the long road.
Yes, sir. There certainly will be uncertainty moving forward about what that looks like.
I would also point out that if we, not just this specific rezoning or allowing this, but if we start going down the road of making all these changes, if we get outside of our master plan. We were here a month ago, and there were a lot of board members that, I'm going to say unfairly through staff underneath the bus, talking about long-term strategic planning. And we got to get better with that. Do our part. Long-term strategic planning requires that we have a set of rules that we follow, that we know how the game is played, and we don't start making exceptions to it unless it really makes sense. And we don't go against staff recommendations. I appreciate KC wanting to represent and fight for his district, but Gary has seen it, Rick, you've seen it. What happens when you start going down these roads? You start, the board starts making little tweaks for political reasons and not for numbers reasons. And what you invariably get to is at some point a big county-wide rezoning. And that's nasty and ugly. And then you got fifty milkreeks showing up at board meetings. I know we want to do what's right for students, but often what's right for students requires that you look at the greater good for all students. And so I just, I'm sorry, but I can't support this.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett, sorry, I skipped over you.
I withdraw.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
I'm trying not to say anything that I'm going to regret. So I'm just going to, I'm going to speak to this in terms of precedent and what we have done in the past that I think is completely appropriate. And it wasn't, it's, staff is going to make a recommendation that works for the long term. And when there are exceptions that we can grant to make it easier for families that don't cause overcrowding, we, as a board, made that decision on multiple occasions during the last rezoning to change, and we voted, a couple of times, Dr. Looney and his staff made those changes without us having to actually vote on an amendment. But there were a couple of times that, in the last bigger rezoning that we did, that the board did vote to go against staff recommendation. And I really don't know that it's necessarily against staff recommendation. I mean, I guess it technically is. They're stating the best plan. We have an obligation to our constituents, and not just the constituents in our district. I mean, I try to empathize. I'm not, I don't talk about exceptions for these students because they're in my district or not. I do it because it's the best thing for these people. Put yourself in those families' shoes, and you know, they know that they're going to get a school in eighteen months in their backyard. And all we're saying is that they don't have to go to, they're, I mean, they're going, they're actually going to two different schools in two years. They're going to go to, they're going to go to Thompson Station for one year or Heritage if they need bus transportation. And then they're going to go to a new school. They're all really excited about the new school. So I don't understand why, it's fourteen kids. And without the exception, the only additional people that could possibly go are those people who are currently at Heritage if they want to go with their siblings. Like Dr. Looney said, the seventh and eighth graders might possibly go with them. I was like, how many, I mean, we're talking twenty kids or so that's going to, that this is going to impact, and there's room to do it. I think it's completely acceptable that we do that. But Eric, I mean, when you make these generalizations about some board members, if you want to name us by name, then name us by name, and don't just put it out there. It's very disrespectful. Some board members not being respectful of the work of staff. I was like, it's blatantly not true. And so I really, before you make those comments, I ask that you either name us by name or try another way to phrase your question or your statement.
Any other comments or questions on this? Ms. Garrett?
I'd like to call a question, please.
Thank you. Question's called, and... Question's called, and...
If there's, if there's no objection, then you can just go ahead and vote.
Well, you just go ahead and...
Otherwise, you need to have a vote on the call for question.
Okay. Any objection to moving forward on a vote on Mr. Hall's motion? Okay, I see none. Then we have the superintendents. You want to restate your, you said you don't agree with the motion?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, if you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is eight yes, four no.
Okay, so, that motion passes. Now, we haven't voted on the whole rezoning. We now, now need to vote on the open zone schools as amended. Anyone like to, do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Eric and Nancy.
Eric and Nancy. Okay. All right, so we have, we're, we're back to the original motion of open zone schools with the amendment to it. Any further discussion on this? Okay, I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I want to make one comment regarding the 12:01 a.m. reference that Dr. Looney gave you earlier. This, the amendment that passed will not be reflected at midnight when this opens. So, yeah, exactly, exactly. So just want to make sure that those families who are watching are aware of that. It will come online in the morning.
Thank you. Next item is the 2019-2020 high school courses. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I do recommend approval of the courses.
Anyone like to make a motion for the, for these? Motion for Mr. Mitchell, we have a second for Mr. Fiskus. Any further comments, discussions? Okay, I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item is the 2019-2020 high school special course applications. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, do recommend approval as we discussed at the work session.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one?
Someone?
We have a motion from Mr. Mitchell, second from Mr. Cash. Any further comments, questions, discussions? I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item is textbook adoption committee recommendations. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, as a reminder, we have to, by state law, adopt, not purchase necessarily, so we're recommending the adoption of these books, not necessarily the purchase of those books.
Anyone like to make a motion for this? We have a motion for Mr. Wimbley, anyone like to second? Second, Mr. Hall. Any further discussion? I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item is new central elementary school name recommendations for Gosie Hill property. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chairman and board members, in compliance with board policy, we have presented you with three names. Let the bidding begin.
Anyone like to make a motion for one of the names? Yes, Ms. Cleveland?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Time out, time out, time out. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for Creekside Elementary School.
We have a motion for Creekside. Anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
We have a second.
Can I ask a point of order here?
Yes, sir.
How are we going to do this?
Okay. It's a great question. You have Mr. Fiskus as a second on that. Actually, we discussed this before the meeting with Mr. Golden, Dr. Looney, and if this, if this recommendation receives seven votes or more, it is the one, then it gets the name. If it doesn't, then we look for other names.
I see, so the first one, the first one in, in the boat sees how far it can row.
Yeah, basically, yes. Let's see, is that, Mr. Mitchell, was that your question?
Yeah, I was just, wasn't sure whether we were going to do nominations for all three and then vote individually, or, or what, but I'm...
That's the way attorney said to do it, right, Jason?
You have many options, but that's, that's, that's been our practice up to this point, so we just decided to stick with practice.
Okay, Ms. Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that schools are named according to board policy, and we had a robust group of individuals who worked on coming up with these three names. I would like to recognize our county commissioners, Tommy Little, Judy Herbert, and Chad Story, who's here tonight, because he said, "I want to see what the name is." So, thank you for coming, Chad. Also, our professional staff, Laura LaChant and Denise Goodman, who led the effort, our principals, who served on the committee, and then board members, members Dan Cash, Brad Fiskus, and myself. We even, at one point, called the county historian, because we had a question about the name. Oh, I, I forgot somebody, didn't I, Chad? Beth? Beth Luthers? Yes, Beth Luthers called the county historian, because we had a question, and he was at a restaurant and went outside on the sidewalk and answered our questions. So, just want to give a little bit of input about that process, and just how, how, what a great experience it was to come together and think about this new school and its name.
Okay. Mr. Wimbley?
I can't help but try this. Would Mr. Fiskus, Mr. Cash, or Ms. Garrett want to weigh in before we vote?
Which? Mr. Cash?
We'd have to change policy. Are you ready?
Let's go.
That was it. Are we ready to cast our votes for the name? All right, let's, can we read back the name of the school, that, the name of the new school is proposed?
Creekside.
Creekside. Okay, we ready to vote? All right.
Your vote is 11 yes, one no.
Our next item is board policies first reading, the section four policies.
Mr. Cash, one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we want to have some more comments. Let's see.
I would just like to recognize that the new principal of Creekside Elementary is in the building tonight as well. So, we're excited for your leadership, so.
Now you can put a title there next to your name as principal of. Mr. Cash?
Can we tell what, can we tell now? No. Okay. Denise said no.
Now, let's leave, let's leave it at that.
All right. We've lost control of this meeting.
The next item is board policies first reading, section four policies. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I do recommend these policy proposals, this is first reading.
I'd like to make a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Welch, anyone like to second?
Second.
Ms. Emerson, second. Any further discussions or comments? Mr. Wimbley?
Are we voting on all three of them?
At the same time.
Section, no, just the section, the section four policies.
Okay, thank you.
And, but the deletion, one on...
Well, you're voting on section four policies first, and then the, the deletion will be the next vote, and then overtime pay will be the next.
All right. We're going to have three separate votes, Mr. Wimbley.
Thank you.
All right, so the section four, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. Go ahead and record your votes. Thank you. The next one is 4.2011 federal programs. That's recommended as a deletion. Dr. Looney?
Recommend approval.
I'd like to make a motion to delete this policy.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Welch, and I'd like to second that. Mr. Cash, there's a second. And Mr. Hall?
Just for the record, can we make it clear that we're not eliminating these?
I, I can answer that, Mr. Chair. We're proposing a deletion because the, the body of this particular policy is incorporated into other policies.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask this for the clarification as well, so, thank you.
All right. Any further comments or questions? I see none. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Angela, you want me to vote for you?
She needs the Energizer Bunny over there to replace the battery. Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next one is board policy first reading, 5.604 overtime pay. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Do recommend approval.
Will it be approved?
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Wimbley. We have a second from Mr. Welch. Any further comments, questions, discussions? Angela, you want to start pushing it now? Go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Well, I hate to say this after this wonderful evening. Oh, wait.
I forgot one county commissioner.
Hold on, Ms. Garrett, Ms. Garrett, go ahead.
I forgot one county commissioner, Dana Osbrooks.
Oh, yeah, how could we forget Dana? Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you, buddy.